Again, our intent this evening is that we're going to get through this public hearing. And we, as a council, know that we may go a little later than we typically would. But it's our intent to go through the process tonight. So just to give people an idea that you wait and we're going to cut it off at a certain point, no, our intent is to go and finish this this evening. So where we are right now is the applicants will represent, the representatives of the applicants will come forward and describe for us their request and proposed, proposed development and anything they would like to share with us. So we'll turn it over to you gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the community. My name is Gordon Root, and I am the manager of Baker Creek Development LLC. We are also the Stafford Companies, which are, you'll hear sometimes Stafford Land Company, Stafford Development Company, and Stafford Homes and Land. Homes and Land is our building company, Development, of course, is our development company. So obviously, we're here to talk about Baker Creek Development. I wanted to first of all, well, our font transition from the previous computer to this one's a little different, so we'll have to deal with that. But Stafford Development Company is the partner and manager of Baker Creek Development, which is applicant. Myself and my partner Rick Wabel are the principals of the Stafford Companies. I've been in the real estate development world since 1984. Rick, my partner, has been in the development business since 1988, very active in the construction business as well as, Rick's been in the homebuilding business, I've been in the real estate development business. We've done about forty-seven hundred lots so far combined, and we have about two thousand lots under development right now overall. Our project manager is Morgan Will, and he, you know, is a local guy that we also have, just a local graduate, as well as he served his planning internship in Yamhill County Planning Department. You'll be hearing from Morgan a little bit later tonight. We are the local developer and homebuilder, and we have twenty-three employees. And when I say local, you know, I got in the real estate development business in nineteen eighty-four. It's hard to imagine being in it for thirty-three years, but when I first got in the business, we had eighty percent of the builders in Oregon built eight homes or less per year. So in the last thirty-three years, it changed dramatically. But we never forget where we came from and why. It's always been the local builders, always supported us, and we have a commitment to support the local building community as well as, you know, the local community as a whole. We focus on smaller communities. So our office isn't like us, we go, but really, we don't have any projects in like us, we go. Our projects are in McMinnville, Dundee, Forest Grove, Scappus, Silverton, Woodburn, Malala, Canby, Dallas. So it's all the smaller communities. And when we take a look at, I guess what made me flee from the Portland metro area was the mandated minimum density standards. It just became absurd. And so we went to really take a look at what are the great communities that make up Oregon, and those that have a housing need, and those that are communities where people moved to and want to stay. And McMinnville, of course, was one of the top on that list, because when we were doing our analysis, McMinnville has a stark lack of available buildable land inventory and a stark lack of rental properties. I mean, there's waiting lists, is what we found at most of the apartment complexes, and it's really hard to get, you know, affordable housing in McMinnville. And I think it's really key when we're talking about affordable housing, or I always talk about it as the ABCs of housing, and that is that we need affordability, balance, and choice in every marketplace, and that's what we strive to deliver. So our development team, we have assembled quite a team. Of course, it's Baker Creek Development, it's a single asset LLC that we formed to go ahead and own and develop this property. Andrew Stamp, right here, is our legal representative, our engineer in the office, right here, or I should say in the room with us, Josh Wells, Josh Wabe, he's with West Tech Engineering Survey, Greg Wilson, environmentalists, or Jack Dalton, project manager, Morgan Will is with us. So what we build? We build a diversity of housing types and lot sizes. Now, when I first got in the business, many years ago, in nineteen eighty-four, it, the way that we approached all development, or all development was approached, is that we couldn't build any more than X number of units on this piece of land. They had maximum density standards, and we never even imagined that we'd, that it would morph into minimum density standards, but that's what's happened. So we've had to go along with the changes in the rules and the Oregon land use laws, as, you know, staff has carefully pointed out, and that is that, you know, we don't make the rules, we just try and figure out how to comply with the rules. And we go into each community, look at the pieces of land, look at the opportunity that's available, and this has forced us to be able to build a completely different style of housing than when I originally got in the business. When I first got in the business in nineteen eighty-four, I, it was just a sense of pride that I didn't like to deliver a lot less than a hundred feet wide. And I remember one of my developments, I had a ninety-five-foot-wide lot, one, and I had one ninety-seven-foot-wide lot, and the rest were hundred-plus. And I wore that as a badge of honor, and I was always, I was the hundred-foot-wide lot developer. Well, things have changed. We can't do that anymore. It's not affordable to the regular workforce. So we've had to morph into building a diversity of housing types and styles. So we have an innovative approach to small lot development. Rick Wabel, my partner, he was one of the first ones to detach attached product with that little shed roof in between, which is essentially garbage enclosure. You saw an example of that earlier today, and the question was, you know, why do we want to have that? And I'll address that here in a couple minutes, as to why people like to have a single-family detached dwelling versus unattached. But we pride ourselves in being able to evolve fast, innovate, and be able to deliver a housing type and product to the market that is both affordable and aesthetically appealing, as well as lives very well inside. So we focus on building high-performance homes, and you know what is a high-performance house? A high-performance house really talks about sustainability, and sustainability, of course, is, you know, efficient use of land. That's where it starts, is in land development. And really, with these smaller lots, it's kind of interesting, because a lot of people, especially when you're talking about Gen X and the millennials that are coming up, to, you know, newer families wanting to buy homes for the first time, or people want to move down, they actually want the smaller lot, because they've seen it and they've grown accustomed to it in various marketplaces, because they have a more active lifestyle. And they don't want to do yard work. You know, they want to be able to enjoy their backyard, but they also don't want to be a slave to their yard. But within this, we've gone ahead and incorporated, you know, the variety of lot sizes and styles. But back to high-performance homes, we build highly energy-efficient homes ourselves. And, you know, it's not only, so what is a high-performance house, it has to do with the ceiling of the building envelope itself, it has to do with the superior insulation characteristics, it has to do with LED lighting, it has to do with on-demand hot water heaters, it has to do with, you know, low-E windows, it has to do with the siding components. So everything you put into that house to make it a more comfortable home, which is more economical and more efficient use of resources. We are predominantly a spec homebuilder. That means that we don't build custom homes, we rarely have a buyer for our home when we start, and this means that we have to be a lot more right than we are wrong, because we're gambling our money every time that we go ahead and build a home. So we do a lot of market research to determine what the market wants, what the market can afford, and what type of products and styles that we need to deliver to the market, from floor plans, covered back porches, energy efficiencies, covered front porches, you know, unique thing. It rains in Oregon. People like to stand out in the rain when they're at your front door, and also have a place to go out and barbecue in the rain. We do that here. But we build spec homes. So also, we're a multiple award-winning builder with the Street of Dreams. We were the developer of the 2016 street, don't know if anyone went up there, but we really build these higher-end homes, and when I say a spec homebuilder, we build all the way from two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-dollar townhomes in rural markets to three-point-two-million-dollar spec homes. So why do we build at the very high end? Well, we're very proud of our accomplishment from a high-performance standpoint in this past year's Street of Dreams. We really swept the awards, but we had a sixty-three-hundred-square-foot, one-level home that was the largest Earth Advantage Platinum Home built in Oregon during 2016, and it had a monthly operating for gas and electricity of a hundred-and-eleven dollars a month. It was an extreme accomplishment. So I always say we build those high-end homes where there's a budget to really test out the cutting-edge, green, energy efficiency, what can we do there? And for the same reason Honda races Indy cars, and that's so we can take what works and transfer that down into our spec homes, or, you know, what Honda transfers from the Indy track into their Accords and Civics, we do the same thing. Another thing is we sell the majority of the lots we develop. And I mentioned we have about two thousand lots under development right now. We expect to build on two-hundred-and-sixty-nine of those lots, based upon our projections. And traditionally, we say our, our goal is that we want to sell eighty percent of the lots and keep twenty percent. We're not quite there, because we had some opportunities to pick up some larger projects, so, but we don't want to build more than about a hundred-and-forty houses a year ourselves, because we don't want to become, you know, a mega builder. We do, and I have done, just focused on development for the most part since nineteen eighty-four. We take a long-term approach to the marketplace. This is not the first time you're going to get to see us. We hope to be back time and time again. When we looked at the market in McMinnville, and before we made the commitment that we did, because if you just look at the proposals in front of you today for Baker Creek South, that's going to be about an eighty-million-dollar injection into your local economy. And that's a lot of money, that's a lot of capital, and we plan to be here for more than five years, probably on the eight-to-ten-year timeframe with just Baker Creek itself. So on the long-term approach, I think that it's important to really take a look at, when I say long-term, we've looked at the aerial here, and we see what the site is that we're discussing, and others, it's been much discussed already, but from a context perspective, we are on the minor arterials. And Baker Creek, while it's developed on the south side to its full curb line, we've gone ahead and agreed to dedicate additional space so that becomes public right away, where the existing plan are stripped, the sidewalk and the fence, you know, back to the fence, I should say. On Hill Road, we were elated when the Hill Road Improvement came out, and we went ahead and volunteered and said, "We're going to dedicate that land, you don't have to condemn it, you don't have to buy it from us, and we're going to go ahead and give you the easements." We worked with them on the roundabout, because we think that, you know, development lifts the community overall, and we want to be able to be a good corporate citizen in the community. So we have Baker Creek North. This is not the subject of the application that's in front of you for consideration today, I just thought it'd be worth mentioning, that yes, there is that note of commercial, there's going to be parks and open space, because it just dictates that, it's continuation of the pet trail there, as well as there's a pond and a creek, and we think that people deserve a way to get there and enjoy that amenity. So we're going to work with your Parks Department, trying to figure a way to make that happen. So then Shad and Claim, we understand that's already the build, we do have the golf course with residential there. Michael Brook Meadows has already been discussed, is a PD, R1, and then the density pattern of cottonwood, R2 PD to the east. We're going to continue and mimic that development pattern, but I just wanted to have you get a little bit more context of what we have in the future. So, and then, of course, there's a school and the park site, existing and future planned site. So not only we're working for the roadway improvements, we're working with, as staff had mentioned, with the Parks Department, to do that extension of Yon Ranch Drive, which is really driving the development pattern first, about what Phase One is going to be, so we can help facilitate that park within its budget time, and it's, I understand it's working with some grants that need to be a kind of a use-it-or-lose-it type thing. So, Morgan?
Yeah, Morgan Will with Stafford Development, and four-eight-five South State Street, Lick Usweag, Oregon nine-seven zero-three-four, I don't know if we had to say that, but I want to apologize as well, we didn't make confirm that our PowerPoint presentation matched the, this computer style, so if any of those legend items bounce off the whitebox, I'm sorry about that. I'd like to talk just a little bit more about what's happening inside the plan development boundary, and I want to thank staff for excellent presentation, there may be some things in our, our presentation that's duplicative, so we'll try to move smoothly through there. And right off the bat, I apologize for the, the graphic doesn't fit, but that's the existing C-three PD portion of the plan development area that staff talked about. The northern portion of the area has the existing R-one plan development overlay approved under ordinance four-six-two-six, and as staff said, this is the plan development approval that we're requesting to amend. Other areas in the project has that remnant county zoning on the southern portion, and R-one otherwise, and the intent of the concurrent zone, zone change application is to change that, replace that remnant underlying zoning to give it a McMinnville zoning code of R-one, which is conforming to the comprehensive plan designation for the area. And then with this application for a plan development amendment, those R-one designations would further change to R-one PD, as staff mentioned. And then, of course, we have the eastern area of the site built out with fifty-seven single-family detached homes and duplex townhomes with, and they were recorded in flats known as Shad and Claim First and Second Edition. Western portion of the site was left unbuilt, and the amendment to the plan development includes adding land, shown here in blue and known as tax lot two-hundred and two-hundred-and-five, with tax lot two-hundred-and-three being the unbuilt portion. And so the amended plan development plans to place a new overlay under, over the unbuilt portions of the plan development, known here as Bay Creek West and Bay Creek East. So the amended plan development overlay will have no changes to the existing built areas, as staff said, the existing conditions of approval from that old ordinance will just carry through on the new decision. But the use of the C-three PD area will meet the current ordinance four-six-two-six, which required it to be multifamily. So the amendment we're proposing will allow flexibility in some of the block dimensions to preserve and protect natural features, and we'll talk more about that shortly. The plan development amendment will also allow for some variations from the underlying zone in three ways, the side setbacks, the front setbacks, and lot areas. I'd like to mention that, you know, that is promoted by the plan development code's purpose. To sort of outline those, staff did an excellent job, they had a table here, here's some graphics to help understand what the SFD, single-family detached, seventy, sixty-five, sixty, and forty, and thirty-two look like, I'll show you on the next slide, and just want to remind everybody that the number represents the width of the lot, of that lot type. So you have a graphic there on the, on the right, and really, these graphics represent what we're proposing to, to ask for variations on, where the SFD lots will have no variations requested, they'll just be standard R-one lots with the ten-foot side yards and the twenty-foot street garage and rear setbacks, and the minimum area of nine-thousand square feet. The next, oh, and these lots, you can see in the graphic, is representative of a typical building, that will accommodate up to fifty-foot-wide dwellings and up to six off-street parking spaces. Moving now to the SFD sixty-five lots, you see the graphic changed. The flexibility we're requesting under the plan development is to allow these lots to have a seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback, similar to the existing plan development approval ordinance four-six-two-six. And then the lots will be greater than sixty-five-hundred square foot average. Similarly, with the SFD seventy lots, they'll accommodate up to a fifty-foot-wide dwelling, have, all lots in the development will have a minimum of four off-street parking spaces, and all other dimensions, such as the garage setback and rear setbacks, will meet the R-one lot standards. Moving on to the SFD sixty lots, the specific variations we're requesting for these types of lots is the five-foot side yard setback, the fifteen-foot front building setback, and then the lot areas being greater than six-thousand square feet average. And this begins to get into the area of lots that are targeted for persons seeking smaller lots with less yard maintenance. The front building setback is five feet less than the standard, but the garage door setback on all of these lots are still the standard R-one twenty-foot to allow full-size, you know, parking in front of the garage door and the driveway parking. And with these variations in the setback, these lots will still accommodate up to fifty-foot-wide dwelling. Obviously, the homebuilders could choose to build a narrower home, and as stated, the minimum off-street parking spaces and lot dimensions, meaning the R-one, other than those except requested for variations. And those, those lots, SFD seventy, SFD sixty-five, and SFD sixty, you'll find in the Baker Creek East portion, with the SFD forty, you see the graphic changed there, this is one of the two innovative small lot types we're bringing to the McMinnville market. Excuse me, they have requested variations for these lots would be the five-foot side yard setback, as well as the fifteen-foot front and street side setback, and the minimum lot area of four-thousand square feet. These lots will accommodate a typical thirty-foot-wide dwelling, that'll be a three-to-four-bedroom home, and the minimum of four off-street parking spaces where the garage door, rear yard setback will, again, all other dimensions sort of meet the R-one lot standards. With the final fifth lot type, typical lot type, the SFD thirty-five, which is the second of the two, sorry, yeah, SFD thirty-two, this is the second of the typical small lot types we're bringing to the market here, that it's an innovative approach. These will be interspersed with the SFD forty lots in Bay Creek West, so the request for variations include a three-foot side yard setback, but because of the interspersed nature of the layout, there'll always be eight feet between buildings. So they have the fifteen-foot front and street side setback, is what we're requesting, as well as a thirty-two-hundred-square-foot minimum lot area. So these lots will allow for a typical twenty-six-foot-wide dwelling envelope, and that'd be a three-car, three-bedroom home with the four, four off-street parking spaces.
That's a good question.
Sure.
Is this at appropriate time?
Sure, please.
How, how do the homeowners kind of navigate that, that narrow side yard?
Sure.
Is it grass, are you going to pave the whole thing? It just seems, I mean, I have a two-foot sidewalk on the side of my house, and that doesn't seem adequate enough for anything without walking on the lawn, I mean, how, how does the neighborhood relationship work with that? It just seems...
It's traditionally bark dust, gravel, or it's a non-maintained area. It's very difficult to maintain five or even seven-and-a-half yards, and seven-and-a-half-foot side yards, and that just becomes a clutter catcher, if you really look at most of the yards, unless you take pattern, if you shifted all the way over to zero lot line and create a, a sliding door out to a side yard and intentionally use that, but traditionally, people don't do that, and so it's more of a thoroughfare, it's so that you, you know, versus a townhome, okay, this is an alternative to a townhome, you know, we often call them detached townhomes, and we'll often go into markets that have a townhome approved plat, we'd buy that, and we go in and re-entitle it to detached homes, because if you have a townhome and you're one of the middle units, how are you going to get the lawn mower into your backyard? Take it through your living room? Well, here you can walk at least back and forth all the way around your yard. And so the whole concept with the detached thirty-two-foot and the forty-foot-wide plan, well, the forty-foot lot accomplishes quite a bit with a thirty-foot-wide plan, but if you get to the thirty-two, it was a twenty-six-foot-wide plan, you can walk all the way around your house, you've got windows on all four sides, you don't have a common wall with your neighbor.
Even, even, you have windows facing the other house?
Well, remember, they're eight feet apart. I mean, there's, you saw many pictures of five-foot setbacks, so we go a three-foot and a five-foot, three-foot and a five-foot. And, you know, with a townhome, you have zero separation, you have, you know, a two-hour firewall. With this, at least you have your separation, and you're in a detached, single-family home. And in reality, this is a predominant housing type all over the East Coast.
Yeah.
And it's been there for eons, you know, and it's just something new to the community, so we look at it differently, and instead of looking at a lot that you walk back and forth in your house this way, you walk back and forth in your house this way. These floor plans we've had to innovate with, they are very livable, they are very open floor plan, sure, they don't have a separate dining room and a separate living room. You know, we, we often call the living room a museum anyway, right? It's a good place for furniture, but we just, and then upstairs, you've got a long hallway, and you have a bonus room, or a bonus area at the top of the stairs, you've got three bedrooms, and the masters are always big, and you have a covered outdoor porch. What I think's very key with this, with everything, is while we've sacrificed side yard, we haven't sacrificed any depth of the backyard, because that's where people live anyway.
Right.
You don't live in your side yard. So that has traditionally been wasted space, and if you try and landscape it in Oregon, it's a problem, even at seven-and-a-half or, you know, ten feet at times.
Yeah, I'm suffering with that myself right now, it's swamp on my side yard.
Right, so rock it and walk across it.
Yeah. I appreciate the explanation. It's, in McMinnville, we have a lot of recycling containers, we have garbage, recycling, glass, yard debris, which probably won't be a big, a big of an issue for these smaller, smaller lots, but where do you plan on, on the homeowners kind of keeping those types of...
And their side yard? Yeah, so like with the townhouses we hear in other, excuse me, thank you for your question, in other developments that have townhouses, or, or communities that have townhouses, they are concerned about, neighbors are concerned about where are you going to put your garbage can? Obviously, you open your garage door and put it inside, but with the townhouse, you know, the, the garages are often, single-car garage is really narrow, very small. With this, the, those side yards will have, you know, a fence, and so you'll be able to open your fence and drive it in, and park your gar, your garbage cans in your side yard out of sight, so that's also another function. I also wanted to point out in the graphic, you can see there that eight-foot side yard and how it functions there. And you ask about, I think it was you, Councilor Jeffries, who asked about why the three-foot side yards?
Yeah.
Is that you?
Um, no, I mean...
Somebody did.
I, I, I get it.
Okay.
I, sometimes I feel like it's kind of a false economy, and there's some reasons for doing it, but sometimes it, you ever picked up like a really great deal on a case of ice cream, and like, but the bottom of it's like cardboard, like that high? Sometimes what I feel like when I see these, I'm thinking like you're getting, you're getting a single-family dwelling, but, I mean, it's, it's so close, it almost feels like if we were to button them together, would we...
It used to be a half-gallon ice cream, now it's not a half-gallon, right?
Yeah, it's getting smaller.
True. Well, I wanted to give you some context of the, the numbers, I mean, one of the reasons why it's three feet, not two feet, is that's the fire distance from your property line, and then, one of the reasons why it's not four feet and four feet, why is it three and five, is to create that diversity in product type and have people have different options.
Is, I mean, this isn't, is there like a, I'm trying to have a hard time explaining If we're concerned about space and use of land, isn't it more economical to have fourplexes with a alley-in-the-back kind of situation, rather than...
I'll take that. Absolutely not. You just said fourplexes with alleys in the back, was the question. Alleys eat land, and it takes away any backyard. So alleys were a great idea, that a whole bunch of people drank the Kool-Aid, that, you know, alley-loaded product is a great idea. It increases the...
The amount of council actually thought it was a great idea.
It, it increases the overall impervious surface area, because in addition to the front streets, you put it in the back alley, you eliminate your backyard space, it really becomes a non-family-friendly type of housing. The front-loaded, and as Morgan was pointing out, these are thirty-foot-wide and twenty-six-foot-wide, thirty-foot-wide and twenty-six-foot-wide, alternating, you know, alternating patterns. We're not hiding the fact of what it will look like, because if you'll notice in the upper corner there, that graphic that we show is not the big homes in Baker Creek East. That graphic is of the exact home pattern that we're trying to create in Baker Creek West. And so it shows the forty, the thirty-foot-wide home on a forty-foot-wide lot next to a twenty-six-foot-wide home, and then you see the space in between. It is actually a very nice street scene, without the, you know, the irrigation need, the grow moss, try and pretend you're going to landscape your side yard, it just eliminates that need, and like I said, for the active lifestyle of the market that we're really targeting here, they don't want to be a slave to their yard. They want less yard work, but they want, you know, the ability to entertain in their backyard.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate you guys giving me the time and answering those questions. This is, like you said, it's, it's pretty new, and, and I think the important thing to remember, at least for, as I'm looking at this, people aren't going to wake up in the morning and say, "Holy crap, there's a house like five feet away from my house." They're going to, they're know what they're getting when they're buying these houses, they're familiar, you know, you know what I'm saying, like...
Right.
So I'm, I'm getting comfortable with the idea, I'm just, I'm having a hard time under...
And remember, it's...
This isn't one that I would ever choose to live in, but there are people who would, and I don't think everyone needs to live up to my standard, it's, so I just, I appreciate you guys giving the time.
Sure. Great. Thank you for the questions.
One more question.
Oh, yeah.
On the, on these SFD thirty-twos, what's, from the... On the, on these SFD thirty-twos, what's, from the, like, how long is the driveway? It looks like it's just a single car and then you're putting two other cars in the driveway?
The driveway depth meets the R1 standard and the R1 standard, the underlying zone standard is twenty feet from the front property line. So the driveways will be twenty feet from the garage door to the front property line. There's actually about a six-inch gap between the sidewalk and the property line, so really it'll be effectively twenty-point-five feet.
Okay, let me, let me further that. If you look at here, if you're going from the street side, you go into a five-foot planter strip, a five-foot sidewalk, twenty-foot garage. You have thirty feet from the asphalt to the face of your garage and as Morgan would point out, now there's a two extra, there's a six-inch curb and a six-inch back from your, so it's probably closer to thirty-one feet. So they're full-size driveways.
Thank you.
Yeah, also, I think this is a good opportunity because the graphic shows it, to mention how we're pairing the driveways to create spaces for on-street parking. The twenty-six feet space between the driveways there, that's to scale and also makes the front yards kind of go together. Creating the paired driveways also place, gives the eight-foot gap between driveways, that's a great place to put the utilities and the public utilities and it's serving directly to the, to the, so when you get a townhome, Councilor Jeffries asked why not a townhomes? Some of the things is like, geez, the townhomes are so tight, where do you put the utilities? Also, if you think about, if we just connected, say, three of these right here and just made them townhomes, then, then you would lose a lot of side yard. So these actually, you'd have, I think this...
And on-street parking, that's a really great point.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we actually add yard area by blowing them up. I think the R4 standard for a townhouse is twenty-five foot wide, you know, or twenty-five-hundred square foot, which would be typically a twenty-five by a hundred foot. These dwellings are twenty-six feet wide, so they're one foot bigger and they got side yard. So it's, it's that middle point, I think, the staff had a special name for it, that middle product, and that's really what we're trying to bring to the market here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a few questions as well. In your supplemental materials here, Exhibit C, on page thirteen, you say, you're talking about this compact urban form that we're in right here and you say that this design philosophy embodies minimal use of finite fuels, raw materials, and limited urban land availability to provide affordable homes to efficient use of land and resources. I see the demonstration of the limited urban land availability. What, what do you mean or what in practice is the minimal use of finite fuels and the raw materials?
Okay, yeah, so thank you for that question. That's a good, good, another good opportunity to ask that question on this slide. As we said, the standard R1 lots would be like seventy feet wide. Here you have two lots next to each other that are forty and then thirty-two, so if you combine those two lots, you have seventy-two. So it's roughly the same as a standard lot, seventy, seventy-two, but for the same length of street and concrete and asphalt, which is oil-based and pipe and sewer lines, and all of which is going to be transferred over in that public right-of-way to the city to maintain for perpetuity, you're getting two single-family dwelling units. So in terms of meeting the housing goals, we're getting, like you, you understood, the more homes in less land, we're also getting more homes using less raw materials up front and that in turn will cascade down and less raw materials long-term.
And that primarily focused on the, the infrastructure that you mentioned being city, street and sewer, et cetera?
Sure, and the dwellings, you know, are smaller, so there's less materials in the dwellings as well, but still, I think the depth of our standard typical lots, a hundred feet, some are ninety-eight due to the existing street layout, some of them fall down to the ninety-eight range, I think some of them go up to the hundred-and-five feet range along the boundary with the existing development. We made sure we made them a little deeper there. But the dwellings, whether it's a SFD seventy or SFD sixty-five, I mean, the depth of the lot is all around a hundred feet. I should say the SF, SFD seventies are deeper because they're along the golf course and adjacent to the Michael Brook Meadows subdivision, those have bigger backyards. But in general, the depth of the lots don't vary much, they're around a hundred feet. And so the width of the dwellings do, so also within the dwelling, there'll be reduced materials, but still providing, you know, four on-street or off-street parking spaces, still providing, you know, a three-bedroom home.
Right, and so then, I understand on the output, how you're fulfilling this, and then you said that you're known as a, as an energy-efficient builder as well, so you can have better land use and, and more responsible materials use going in, but also put in a structure that doesn't heat efficiently, doesn't cool efficiently, et cetera. So will we see some of those design standards, which to me looked like as though they were largely aesthetic or they're, they're, or entirely aesthetic, where will we see the, the follow-through in the energy efficiency in the homes? And so that they do remain affordable housing, which is more than just the cost of the output?
Because we sell majority of the lots and we're actually mandated by code to offer them, we can't dictate what someone else is building. I can tell you that codes continue to increase. The, the various programs from third-party verifications of the energy performance scores, the Earth Advantage Gold, the Earth Advantage Platinum, those type of standards are continuing to become the norm and more and more consumers are asking for that and so the building industry is responsive to that. And so it just comes back to that a new home is generally lower-cost heating, air, you know, air conditioning and maintenance in general. And so it's the market pushing it that direction.
You said you're selling most of the lots, but I, I thought you're selling about twenty-five percent of the lots?
It's a minimum, that we'll put up twenty-five percent. We expect that we're probably gonna keep forty-three to forty-seven of the homes and they'll probably be in Baker Creek East.
May I add to that, to further answer your question, you know, the Baker Creek East, I think the next slide here, if you don't mind me switching it, summarizes the types and the eighty-three lots in the east are the larger possible. Some home builders might choose to not maximize the building envelope and build a smaller home so they could build more efficient with a smaller home. Definitely, de facto, the smaller lots in Baker Creek West, since they are smaller, will be more energy-efficient. So we can't control what type of home somebody who might buy a lot from us on Baker Creek West might build. The code, you know, will be new home standards, but since it's smaller, it'll be, if you approve the smaller lots tonight, that de facto creates less energy demand because it's the volume of space needed to be heated of the, does that make sense?
It does, I don't necessarily agree with you. I mean, just in the sense that I live in a small home, my heating bills can be astronomical. I know people that live in much larger homes but have better-built homes and their heating costs are, are, are lower, so I, I appreciate what you're saying on the output and I have that.
True.
You had something, Alan?
Yeah, are you done?
Yeah.
I wanna catch up.
Yeah.
Did you answer a question?
So...
How many of these homes in the, the more densely populated neighborhoods are you keeping versus...
Well, those were, you know, that's yet to be seen how many we keep. We like to build that type of product because it sells really fast and we think there's a great demand for it. We've not specifically said, all right, here's how many we're gonna keep. We may keep the northern phase of it in its entirety for ourselves, but we're still trying to figure out which of the phases we're going to build and keep for ourselves, but we will be building both types of product.
I had a question down here.
So back to the alleyways.
Yes.
I take it you're not a fan?
Really not a fan of, of alleys.
The only reason I bring it up is that it's been proven to be a very neighborly, livable neighborhood because of the lack of driveway cuts on the city streets and one of the big detractions of your development is concrete driveway after concrete after driveway cut, lack of parkway strip, lack of street trees and other things, lack of space to, to just do stuff out, so, lack of livability. So what do you, what do you say about that?
Well, you're talking about the traditional neighborhood development type, development style. We have put alley product in some of our projects, we've inherited some that, you know, we bought from banks that were coming out of that downturn that we purchased.
Yeah.
And we, we looked at alley-loaded product in here, we looked at how efficiently it will lay out or inefficiently would lay out. And, you know, my biggest thing is that it doesn't really provide the family home. And it's in, you know, we live quite near Villalboa, which is a widely awarded and widely heralded development in Wilsonville. I know Rudy Catleb very well for many, many years. He is a good friend of mine and, you know, I herald what he does. And he just does some tremendous things with his, his products. It's just that he has both types of products and the products, if you look at Villalboa, they've migrated toward the front-loaded instead of always the alley-loaded as they continue to evolve within the project. And it's because the family-friendly nature of the homes that have some sort of a backyard. If people don't have children and they wanna have the active lifestyle, no matter what, they want a backyard for Fido.
Well, that, that all works out fine. I mean, it's, it's a matter of opinion, really, but I think one of the negative parts about your project is a, is a...
The streetscape.
Density, streetscape. With such a large piece, it's one thing to be different components, we have a grouping of those type things and then you got another grouping of this and another grouping of that, but the area that covers is so dense with so many driveways. That's one of the detractors of it.
We have actually built much tighter density than this. As far as, we have a project where we're at sixteen units an acre on single-family detached and they're fifteen and seventeen-foot wide homes on pretty narrow lots and they're single-car garages and they sold so fast, we couldn't hardly imagine. And it's, and they had ten-foot and twelve-foot backyards. It is just, I mean, it stuns and amazes me. Remember, I'm the guy who likes hundred-foot lot frontages. But it's just what the market demands and the price point. And, you know, the, we used to have a triangle demand and now it becomes more of a spire when you start getting up in price point and there's a whole bunch of demand that's not being met. And we just find that from a layout perspective and being able to do this, and you mentioned segregation by housing type, we had originally one of our plans, it was, the thirty-two-foot wide lots were in one area and the forty-foot lots were in another area. And then through meeting with staff, we came up with this whole, let's alternate it and let's create that eight-foot space between and let's, you know, it creates more on-street parking and it just creates a better streetscape overall, it creates more areas and ease of putting in utilities, ease of, you know, more street trees. Street trees are a wonderful thing, we love them, we wanna incorporate as many as possible and we, but we have to accommodate the needs of the people that are moving here into market that we're targeting.
Okay.
So how many street trees in, let's say, this section where you've, you have these eight-foot separations, how many street trees would you be able to plant per block?
I, I may say that Exhibit G1, Site Plan One, Site Plan Two sheets, as well as Exhibit H1, Site Plan Three, you know, SP Three and SP Four show our proposed street tree locations. I would say to answer your question, we're targeting one tree per lot. Obviously, corner lots will make up for those, those other lots that can't have a street tree due to a fire hydrant location or utility transformer-type conflicts. The, I think there's a condition of approval that requires the landscape plans to, to be reviewed by the landscape committee, so we'll definitely with our construction drawings be providing a full landscape plan of all the open spaces as well as the street trees and determine where there's conflicts, you know, with utilities and where there's not.
Right, no, I, I recall that there was a, that condition for approval.
So what you see in the plan, it targets one per lot is what we're aiming for, even in Baker Creek West, obviously minus a few utility conflicts.
A little bit more...
A further question on the lot sizes. On the pricing of the lots to sell, what's, what would be the difference between the four thousand or the forty versus the thirty-two as far as pricing?
Okay, on the pricing of the lots is the question. We're looking right now, these are preliminary pricing, we're looking at eighty thousand dollars for the thirty-two-foot wide lots, eighty-five thousand dollars for the forty-foot wide lots and then a hundred-and-fifteen to a hundred-and-twenty in Baker Creek East and then there will be a premium along the golf course and the larger lots.
So only about a five-thousand-dollar difference between the thirty-two versus...
Right. At the lot price level, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Of course. And that, that transfers into a fifteen to twenty-five-thousand-dollar difference in price point because you're usually three to five times, you know, three to four is kind of the normal of your lot price, it extrapolates up.
So with that as the lowest lot price, then reasonably a builder could come on, build a home, sell it and everybody's, that needs to make a profit in that system has made one and it would still be on the market for roughly, the number you have in your section is two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. That, that you say the average local family seeking to purchase a home in McMinnville, McMinnville can afford to pay roughly two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars, you cite Realtor.com Mortgage Tools affordability.
You're talking about the affordability index. Feasibly, someone could come in here and build, buy a lot, have it built and probably hit a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar price point.
That's on the thirty-two?
Yes.
How does that jive with your understanding, Remy, of affordability?
I would really defer to Heather on that, I mean, that's a, it's a moving target because it, there's, there's different tools that you can use to, to come to that conclusion. Essentially, you look at the median family income for the, for the area and then depending who you're talking to, it's either twenty or thirty percent of median family income is, is what qualifies as affordable housing. And so as that income level changes for our area, it, it changes, it changes that number. So I, I don't have it, I don't, I don't have a hard grasp in real time on a final number.
Changes. I mean, this isn't gonna end homelessness is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think anybody that's homeless is prepared to spend two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars, so, oh, far away.
We'll address some of these questions possibly in other slides as well, so please...
Let them continue.
Yeah, please again apologize us, we'll definitely, when we come back with our, our property to the north, coordinate with city staff to make sure our PowerPoint presentation's in the same version. These numbers are already in your, in your material in front of you and were represented correctly there, so. So just wanted to also give you a little sense of the street network. You know, the property really lays itself out due to all the existing streets, adjacent stub streets. We're going to extend public streets and utility services to and through the project site. That includes an extension of Shadon Drive to the south. I know there was a question before about cut-through traffic. I think this street is actually designed for larger width, this is sixty-foot wide right-of-way and a wider pavement width for getting those, and this will make the connection of Shadon Drive to the south. Extension of Twenty-third Street to the west as well as Yon Ranch Drive to the north and other extensions of other stub streets, including internal local streets that are new. So the...
Okay, so I'll take over here and we're, we're gonna take a little, talk a little bit about the, the plan development approval criteria. And, you know, Heather went over this a little bit, says there's specials, you know, the approval criteria in the section listed here, there's special physical conditions or objectives of a development which a proposal will satisfy to warrant the departure from the standard regulation requirement and we've got seven of them we're going to discuss. Number one is the housing affordability, really, and this is what we need to do to accomplish that. We're gonna discuss the focus on the single-family detached housing type, our open space amenities, off-street parking, how we're going to avoid the cookie-cutter housing, appropriate transition of housing density and preserve and incorporate some of the natural amenities, so. Andrew?
Good evening, my name's Andrew Stamp, I'm a land use attorney. My address is four-two-four-eight Galewood Street, Lake Oswego, Oregon nine-seven-zero-three-five. As Gordon said, our first objective for this development is to provide for needed affordable housing and to provide a diversity of lot types and a diversity of lot sizes to meet housing and to provide a diversity of lot types and a diversity of lot sizes to meet the needs of the most broad group of potential buyers as possible. Now, when you, when you hear the phrase affordable housing, some people will think about government programs that are intended to subsidize housing, uh, subsection eight programs and also, uh, the, the community action teams that, that provide funding for low-income residents. That's not what we're talking about here today. We're talking about another tool in your toolbox, uh, for achieving affordable housing and that's land use planning and zoning. And, you know, it, it's a truism that housing prices are ultimately determined by supply and demand. And if you have a constant demand, but you reduce the supply by not feeding the pipeline of lots, then you're going to, uh, cause prices to go up. And you, as a city council, have an important role to play in ensuring adequate supplies of land and that's, that, that's what the comprehensive plans are all about. And I'll give you example, in Hood River, uh, they didn't do a really good job of keeping the pipeline open and over the last few years, they've experienced four hundred thousand dollar homes went to five hundred thousand dollars in a period of about two years. And that was just because of a lack of buildable land inside the urban growth boundary combined with, because it's such a nice community, a constant influx of people coming there looking to live there. And, and, uh, so they really failed under goal ten and you can see it's read right here what, what goal ten requires. Plans shall encourage the availability of adequate numbers of needed housing units at price ranges and rent levels which are commensurate with the financial capabilities of Oregon households and allow for flexibility of housing location type and density. And, and this is really what we're focused on here with our development. We're looking at the, the financial capabilities of the community, of the people in McMinnville, and we're trying to tailor housing types that'll accommodate as many of those, uh, as we can. Now, as a caveat, I'd like to point out that in, as staff mentioned, it's difficult to achieve this goal because of the plan policy that limits density to six units per gross acre. Um, but this development is about as close as, as anyone could ever come to, to appealing to the broadest section of homeowners. Now, uh, and to your point about what housing affordability means, we're using the Department of, uh, Housing and Urban Development definition. They define affordable as spending no more than thirty percent of your gross household income, uh, and dedicated to housing needs. So, and they, and the second concept there is concept of cost burden and, and what they say is that if you're spending more than thirty percent of your household income on housing, that you're considered cost burden. Now, PSU has put out numbers, um, on, on this for McMinnville, Yamhill County, and we put Dundee in as another example here. McMinnville has twenty-eight percent of its residents are cost burden according to PSU and, uh, uh, a, a local, uh, housing authority of Yamhill County, whereas the county-wide average is only twenty-two percent. And Dundee is pretty fortunate in the way they've been planning, for whatever reason, they're only at six percent. Um, next slide, please. And yet, what we see in McMinnville, there's still a very high demand for housing. Yamhill County's adopted population forecast for McMinnville shows over seventeen thousand people projected by the year twenty thirty-five. And that's going to create a demand for over eight thousand dwelling units, including six thousand single-family homes if the, if the mix of homes that has traditionally occurred in this community, uh, stays, um, constant. So, so we know that we have a high demand here and now is a question of if we don't want prices to go up, we have to increase the supply. And that leads to a problem here. I mean, the good news is, is that incomes in McMinnville over the last seven years have risen seventeen percent, up six thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. The median household income in McMinnville now is, uh, forty, approximately forty-seven thousand. Uh, unfortunately, while, while that number's good, unfortunately, the county home prices in that same time period have gone up about twenty-five percent. And what, so what you're seeing is a gap, a widening gap occurring, uh, between incomes and housing prices. And, and that's a danger sign for your community. And that's, that's something that, that, uh, when, when, I know that you guys are working on a housing affordability task force and that's really one of, one of the key things that you want to focus on is how to eliminate that increasing gap. And here tonight, um, uh, you know, we're here to solve one little piece of that puzzle and that is to bring you housing that's going to decrease that gap. One of the ways that you can do it obviously is to increase the supply of land and the supply of housing's on the market because obviously if you've got ten developers fighting over one piece of land, that, that price is going to get high and that's going to get transferred on to the home buyers. But if you have more land, uh, that's available for purchase, then, then that, that bargaining inequity gets diminished. And the second way is to make sure that once you do have the land inside the urban growth boundary, that it, that it's available to develop online. So when projects come like this, you want to take a really good look at them to make sure that that pipeline stays open. Um, and, and so, oh geez, one of the things that we've, we've noticed here is that our one conforming lots are not very affordable to, uh, many people in this community. We've talked about that, nine thousand square foot lots. Proximate income level that you would need to afford the homes on those lots would be over two and a half times the median income of forty-seven thousand dollars. And so that's just not going to work. So what we're proposing, then where this plan development can fit in is, is to do what goal ten says and it asks the city to provide housing choices to reach all income levels. And what we've done here by creating a broad spectrum of lot sizes is we're appealing to, uh, the broadest possible range of, uh, home buyers. Now, our goal is to develop a diverse variety of housing commensurate with those local incomes. And so in other words, we want to build homes that people can afford and it includes a variety of lot sizes. We checked the, uh, last month's inventory of land, or houses that were for sale in McMinnville and the median price on the market was four hundred thousand. And that's really only, uh, affordable to a small percentage of McMinnville residents. According to PSU, that would be about two hundred households, uh, in the city that could afford the homes, the median home prices on the market right now. And our goal is to significantly lower that. As Gordon and Morgan said, we're trying to bring houses on the market that are at a much reduced price compared to that average right now. The other good part about providing a diversity and variety of housing prices, it allows people to move up and down, uh, the mark, the housing spectrum while staying in the same community with their friends and neighbors. And, and I contested this personally as, as a young, uh, man just getting out of college, I couldn't afford very much, so I, I had to live in a very small apartment. I was in the army, made some income, then I was able to buy a starter home, went to law school, got a job, and after many years of being a lawyer, now I live in a more or less the same thing as an R1 home here in McMinnville. And there's going to be a time when I get tired of mowing the lawn and I'm going to go, want to go back to one of those, uh, houses in Baker Creek West where I don't have to do the lawn. But to be able to have a community, uh, plan development like this where it has all of the housing types is, is really good because if I want to stay in the community and have the same friends, I can pick and choose amongst the housing types as, as houses become available for sale. So one final point on housing affordability. You can see that we've provided a variety of lot sizes, so we've hit the broadest market possible. But it's important to note that it's a zero-sum game when considering open space and, and housing affordability. And in other words, the development costs are going to be fixed, uh, for the site. And the more homes that you can accommodate in that space, obviously each home has a smaller percentage of those overall development costs. Just like if I was going to put a, a sewer pipe from this side of, of this podium over, over to there, that, that fixed cost, if I only have three homes to divide it by, there, if that cost is nine hundred thousand, three homes, each one would get three hundred thousand. If I can put nine homes in there, uh, then it's only a hundred thousand per home. And so what, when we went to the planning commission and we saw, they asked us put in more open space, we calculated that by doing so, it, it costs about three thousand dollars more to the remaining lots in Baker Creek West. And so you can see that, that there is, even though we're now supportive of putting that open space, we did think it was a good idea, there is a zero-sum game there. It does have consequences to the prices. So what we're really trying to do here is achieve a balance when it comes to housing affordability and livability. And, and that's all I really want to say on that issue. Uh, Gordon, if you want to take the next slide?
Okay, so I'm going to talk about the, why do we focus on detached, uh, single-family homes versus attached product? And when we look at market ban, like I said, we're a spec builder and every builder takes a risk. Um, you know, Metro did a study with a whole bunch of different partners within the alliance. It comes, it was called the Metro Regional Housing Preference Study. And it came out that eighty percent of the people prefer to buy a single-family detached home and seven percent indicated they had preference for attached dwellings. What was really interesting about that was they came back one year later and polled the same people and a year later, the people living in the attached dwelling, ninety percent wanted to move to a detached, single-family home. So the real long-term market for an attached product is seven tenths of one percent. And even though it's only eight feet between houses, you can't hear what's going on inside there as well. You have the fire break, you have the peace, you have the windows on all four sides, you have a light coming in, you can walk all the way around your house and that you have the desired housing type. So when we look at what's existing within the Shadon claim, it's fifty-four percent detached, single-family and forty-six percent attached townhomes. Um, and their amended plan development would be seventy-one point three percent detached, seven point eight percent attached and twenty percent of multifamily. So we're hitting more of the broad spectrum of what, you know, the survey says, which we have to look at all the time, is numbers, numbers, numbers. I mean, if you come into our office, we're full of spreadsheets and numbers all day long and market studies and where they are and what they are and who they are. So we try and build to the market, what they want, and they want windows on all four sides, just like most people in this room. So what is this one? Uh, open space amenities. Here you go. It does say open space amenities on there, hard to read.
Well, you really are a third objective of the plan development considering, um, you know, the variations we're requesting. We wanted to make sure we provided, uh, open space amenities. And when we first looked at the property, we went and looked in the context of the development, like Gordon did, he looked around the outside of the property. We looked at the open spaces adjacent to it and, and within the development, uh, the plan development we're amending. And that starts with the almost two acre existing park within the plan development, um, just right there west of Meadows Drive. And then to the south, the existing power line trail and of course the property, um, adjacent to Yon Ranch Drive that the city intends to develop with, what's it called? The Northwest?
Northwest Neighborhood Park.
Neighborhood Park. And that's the concept plan and exhibit P, uh, we show that the city shared with us and that they plan to build concurrent with, uh, improvements to Yon Ranch Drive that we'll be making there with Baker Creek West. And we've met with the city, uh, planning, uh, parks department to understand their needs and their goals and our engineer's been working with their landscape architect on that. And originally, we thought that the, the open space in Baker Creek East around the natural features and the, the community parks, which you can see one block, uh, east of the development would be sufficient. And we went to the planning commission and we, we, I know the city staff, you see in the exhibit, there's the staff report for the, the planning commission's meeting. They did the calculation and, and determined that really Baker Creek West needs additional open space to, to the existing park or the future park. And they proposed, uh, a condition of approval of six thousand square feet, uh, additional, uh, park space in Baker Creek West for a tot lot. I'll talk about that here in a second. But just to look at what we propose now with this, um, after the planning commission hearing, the planning commissioner said, well, we want actually even more than six thousand. They felt that these people who are living in the SFD thirty-two and SFD forty lots, they'll have, they'll have a standard depth, twenty-foot backyard, um, but they're a little bit narrower and felt that they needed a little bit more active space. So we proposed removing the two lots at the end of the block here on Proposed Montgomery Drive in Baker Creek West's south first phase. And that, uh, is over ten thousand square feet. It's about two hundred feet long, so it's about two-thirds of a football field. It's really a place where it's going to open field, uh, it's a place where kids in the neighborhood can go to, it's centralized in that block area where they can go to and play frisbee and play catch and have fun. Um, we're also building a walkway, um, connecting, uh, Montgomery Drive West to Hill Road so people, we want to encourage walking, people want to go to the south, can get there conveniently. And then there's the, uh, what we call, we call passive open space. Clearly it's labeled on the drawing as a detention pond. I know that that's not a place where people can go and get on, but people walking down the sidewalk, it'll be, uh, open, it won't be built up. And it'll be a nice, uh, transition so the park doesn't get too, um, uh, cluttered or pressured by buildings. Also, we're building, uh, the road frontage there for the park so that their stormwater will be managed in our detention pond, not within the park. And then to the northern part of Baker Creek West, you'll see the, uh, we increased the size of this, uh, tot lot park proposed at the planning commission. It was originally six thousand square feet, uh, per the condition proposed by the city staff. We increased it to be seventy-five hundred square feet and, uh, located here on Han Drive. In addition, we included an over eleven thousand square foot active, uh, open field play, play area. And this again is like the other one, about two hundred feet long, fifty feet wide, uh, very, uh, good loc, centrally located among this block area for people to get to and, and go down and, and play with the neighborhood kids. Um, and then a walkway to the north to connect Han Drive to Baker Creek Road to encourage walking in the community as well as access to future transit and future commercial sites to the north. In the Baker Creek East area, over here in the first, uh, first of those two phases to the east, where there's a tree grove in existing condition, so we, when we're doing our layout, first thing we said, we want to try to preserve that tree grove. So we made an open space track there and connected, uh, the blocks with a mid-block path, uh, to enjoy the tree grove with a walkway. We're proposing in this area here, there's also some tree, existing trees to preserve and an active open space for Baker Creek East. Most of these lots will already have, um, you know, larger yards compared to Baker Creek West, but we felt an active open space at this location was fairly centrally located. Um, and then, uh, our proposed detention pond is again a passive open space for over sixteen thousand square feet. And the second phase, uh, we're creating a walkway between McCreary Drive and Snowberry and then the existing wetland area. And I, I like, I have to talk more in another slide about the wetland areas, but this is a, again, passive open space, nat, natural areas. Um, I actually drove up, uh, when I brought your binders to the staff to distribute and I drove up the, the southern extension of that stub, that road there is, is, goes through the Cottonwood subdivision and there was a deer right there in that passive open space, um, on the boundary between the, uh, the storm facility for the Michael Book and Cottonwood Meadows subdivisions. So we know this is, is definitely natural area. Um, yeah.
So I'm going to address, uh...
Sure.
Sure, to the Baker Creek West?
No.
Oh, that, oh, that's Baker Creek East right there.
West, sorry.
Yep, okay. Oh, get your compass out, right? This is the northerly phase?
One more down.
Okay, to the southerly phase? Yes.
Could you explain the justification for, or the decision why you had that little block there? You have, you have two green spaces on either side of that where it's one above it doesn't have any, seems like...
I'm sorry, say again? The active open space, A?
You have the green space adjacent to the park, which, which seems, um, redundant. We have, we have a lot above that, about the same size, just to the, just to the west. If you move that...
That's a retention pond. You mean?
That's our stormwater detention pond.
Yeah, that's the low point on the site.
It's the low point?
Yes.
It's just a visible...
Yeah, the words are hard to read, obviously, at this scale perhaps. If you look at exhibit F3, you'll see it's a detention pond and that's the twenty thousand square foot.
And that's going to manage not only stormwater here, but also coming off the roadway in front of the park.
Yeah, it's important to know that that's the storm pond to manage, uh, stormwater for the entire street network of both phases, including the, the north.
So the parking out of the, the active space is on the...
Yeah, and we, we purposely picked that side because obviously on the east is, is the future park and there's going to be plenty of active. And you'll notice our, um, on-street parking is shown, which Gordon's about to talk. We didn't show any on-street parking in front of the, the park or the multifamily, that's just in front of the residential.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no problem. It's a good question.
Uh, when we talk about the parking, I think that it's become fairly apparent here, we have a lot of parking spaces at this point. Uh, adequate off-street parking was that, you know, all single-family homes, uh, in the code that you can't read there... is that we have to have at least two off-street parking. Every house in here has four. We talked about pairing the driveways. And we're going to pick up more than one per lot, so we're going to have five off-street parking spaces at a minimum per home. So the summary, two hundred and eight new detached, single-family homes, four hundred and sixteen off-street, uh, parking is required. We're going to have eight hundred and thirty-two at a minimum. That doesn't count any where the residence was three-car garage or three-car driveway. And a minimum of three hundred and five on-street parking spaces, as, uh, Morgan pointed out, that we didn't really max out the on-street. So we're going to have at least eleven hundred and thirty-seven new parking spaces added with the development here.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So one of the concerns, obviously, you've heard is parking, uh, and numbers are good. But, um, one of the concerns that we hear often is that just because people have them, doesn't mean they actually use them, because they might use the garage for something else and things like that. You've done a development that's a similar density. What has your experience been with regards to once it's built out, the parking situation in this community?
The question on the parking situation, what it's really taught us in these smaller lot, uh, developments, that we need to have double-car garages and double-car, uh, out in front. They need to have a twenty-six-foot width at a minimum. So you can have the home, the entry, a window in the front, as well as a two-car par- off-street in front, because a lot of people use the garage as a storage area. So that's what it taught us, is the single-car driveway doesn't provide adequate parking.
So that's what your experience has been, is that that problem occurs if you've dropped down to the single car?
Right.
And that's why you, you over...
Correct, this is an overcompensation. And particularly like when you get over into, you know, those end-cap parks, you know, they have no curb cuts. So they provide a lot of parking for overflow, for, you know, someone's having a party or visit, whatever. But yeah, the lesson learned is two cars in the driveway.
Thank you.
The cookie cutter housing, I think staff did a very good job of, uh, talking about this. Uh, we have the variation lot size, side setbacks, not one type of variation size amassing.
Question I have is...
Yes.
We, we'd asked the question, how many designs do you have in your, your, your design book that you're working off of?
Well, there's likely going to be a minimum of four. Well, I'm, I'm going to talk predominantly here about Baker Creek West, because that's where the concern is. Baker Creek East, we're going to have a huge variety of housing over there, all right? Uh, Baker Creek West, if you do five floor plans with three elevations each, you'll have fifteen. But we're going to not only just say, here's the fifteen, we're going to say, here's design elements that need to be incorporated into each of these houses and what the variances can be. But, um, you know, as staff mentioned, that there should be at least twelve. And here, I think that what we're targeting is fifteen out of the, out of the gate.
Mr. Mayor, I know there's another question. One of the things too is to keep in perspective, if you look at the street and just count the number of lots on, on any of those given streets, you might say nine plus nine, eighteen. So if you think about, well, if none of the adjacent ones are going to be the same and none of the ones across the street, and you only have eighteen, you know, six, 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 you...
And then having builders that could disperse within that too, they're going to have a different form.
You have different builders that you can do, you have different paint colors, you can do different siding treatments. It's, you know, it's to all of our advantage to have them look differently.
Well, absolutely.
No one likes to be the same. I don't like homogenized neighborhoods, um, and that's why we have created a variety here. And, and the difference in house width makes a big difference. If you're, you know, a thirty-foot and a twenty-six-foot. And some people may decide to put a twenty-eight-foot plan where they could put a thirty-foot plan, and that opens up the space in between. You know, I doubt anyone goes below the twenty-six-foot wide, uh, floor plan, because that's where you get your double-car garage. Cookie cutter, we already talked about the facades, a five-finger rule, no reverse elevations, building elevations across, directly across. We're going to have the pattern book, and lots are going to be made available to other builders. One of the things that I wanted to come back to is, here, I can do it on this slide. When we were talking about the fifteen-foot elevation, I mean, the fifteen-foot front yard setback, it's on the SFD, uh, sixty, the forty and the thirty-twos. That provides a huge opportunity for us in the building community to be able to project into what otherwise would be a twenty-foot setback. So I want to make it clear that it's thirty feet still here. But if you look at what this allows us to do from a building style perspective, we can come out with a shed roof here and protrude there. We protrude here with the five feet. We protrude here and a shed roof, we protrude here. That extra five feet makes a huge difference in what you can do with a street scene. Because it takes away that whole twenty-foot setback plane, just being able to alternate it back and forth in that. That's really what the technique and use is of the, uh, fifteen-foot setback variance that we're asking for. It's not to, you know, build a bigger house on a smaller lot, it's to create, create a variety of the street scene.
If I could add on to that, um, Gordon mentioned that I have a land use planning background. And I know one of the reasons why Alley loaded small lots, besides the, you know, removing the, the driveway conflict with the sidewalk, was is to bring back the front porch and try to, through, um, design, encourage people to hang out on the front porch. As you can see here, everybody gets a front porch when you're allowed to do some flexibility, um, with the front facade as well as a backyard. So this is kind of really the best of both worlds. Yeah. Yeah. Will it... Right, well, I also want to, I want to give a personal note to that, you know, when I was growing up, I, um, uh, I always thought that, you know, running out in the front yard, playing with my friends in their front yard was great, right? And then now I'm a parent of, you know, a first grader and a fourth grader, and I've got a wife, and she won't let him play in the front yard. And honestly, I don't know if I want him to play in the front yard and get hit by a car. And so there's, there's some things that are theoretically great, and then some things are realistic. And I mean, I live in a community, uh, that everybody's got a front yard, you know? Everybody's got a backyard. And where do my kids play? My kids play in the backyard because it's fenced, that's where the dogs can be, I don't have to have them on a leash. So, um, even though they're, it would be nice if people, you know, sat on the, rocked on the porch and swang, swang on the hammock. Um, and they don't, and it's not because we don't build them front porches, we do, but people like that backyard area. So I don't mean to oversell it, it's more of a, of what we've experienced.
Okay, cool.
So, um, you can see here, we, uh, the sixth, uh, objective of our, uh, plan development, uh, is the housing density transition. We're trying to make sure we, uh, match the existing patterns that you see in the existing zoning from the, their surrounding land uses. So that, no, yeah.
I'm sorry, I meant to get a question in to you.
On this slide?
When you're talking about availability of lots to other builders...
Oh, yes.
Which is part of the versatility of the house plans that we're looking for in the neighborhood. The six-month time, could you exp- explain that? When, when do you think a preliminary map?
Oh, a- absolutely, I think it's preliminary plat approval. Uh, if we wait until final plat approval before that six-month starts, it, that is, um, an inordinate waste of time. Because as soon as we start, uh, actually site development, the interest level is going to spike. And that's where people are going to want to come in and buy the lots and really line it up. Also, from a financing perspective, if you know from being in the industry, if we have, uh, a percentage of the lots pre-sold, the banker loves that. You know, the more we have. So we would like to be able to have the six-month start at preliminary plat approval, because then we have an approved plat, we can...
Can I get your opinion on when you, when you think that would start in the process?
It, um, uh, just a minute. When the preliminary plat approval would, well, I would hope that we have an affirmative vote tonight.
Yeah, see, that's the point, is a preliminary plat approval goes through months of time.
Right.
So if you start it from tonight, uh...
Maybe I can answer.
See what I mean? It, it, it's not really, uh, a true measure of time for availability of lots if you say from preliminary plat, uh, approval, instead of the, uh, recording of the final map. Uh, the final map is actually when a legal lot can be sold and, and...
Correct.
And, uh, money can be received legally for earnest money and, and, uh, before that, it's...
It's a re- lot reservation.
Yeah, it's just a reservation and can be revoked by any party. So what you're doing is eliminating, uh, a big block of time where builders could take a look at it and say, yes, this is legal and we want it. Uh, so you're eliminating a lot of that time with the preliminary plat approval.
I think we'd be flexible on that, right? Let me just add to this, I think, um, it's very clear, you're right, the actual closing and purchase of the lot won't occur until after the plat records. What we're saying is we're going to offer them, and it's standard practice to list lots that are going to be online and then people, uh, put in a reservation for that lot. And that actually aids the builder, because the builder can then know, I'm going to be buying this lot once construction of all the streets are done and once the plat records. They can then prepare their home building permit, uh, application and submit it to the building department and get that under review so that the day after the plat records, they close and they pull their building permit and start construction.
Okay, okay.
That was what we thought, the thought process was.
Sure, yeah. And that's, that's a good thought process, but it, it doesn't help the builder, really. Because what you're, you're really reducing the window of opportunity for builders to come in. Now, that may increase when you don't have a lot of sales, you may want to increase it to a year. But if, as far as a builder coming in, uh, it's, it's cutting down the window of time dramatically. If you go six months from that preliminary plat, which could be six months from the recordation of the plat.
How about a compromise? Uh, because, a- and here's a thought, instead of, you know, we have been, you know, we were canceled, we were gone from November to December, then we had freezing weather to January to, and we were going to be in front of this body anyway because of the zone change. And we lost probably another thirty, forty-five days there. We would like to put in phase one and phase two of this project this construction season. And that means that we've already started engineering speculatively on the street layout and the street pattern. Because like in Shatten, you know, the surface is already run there. I mean, there's no changing Shatten Drive. And, you know, as Morgan pointed out, this lays itself out, there's twelve street stubs into this, and we just kind of connect the dots. So we can naturally assume that yes, and we've sent the engineers on their way to start doing the engineering there. We want to, as soon as the approval period is there and assuming, uh, you know, uh, no appeal, we'd like to turn in the engineering drawings as soon as possible to get this into the ground. So instead of at preliminary plat approval, because as you say, it's kind of nebulous and it's, well, we have a piece of paper to look at, which we work on all day long. But then at recordation of that plat may not be all the way until, you know, November, December. And depending upon how fast the county processes, it could even push into next year. But we found that builders, including ourselves, we want to have, uh, the ability to pull a building permit right after that plat records. I mean, we're on top of the county the whole way pushing that plat to record, so we can pull building permits. The best time to start houses, of course, is October, November, because then you hit the, the spring selling season. That's exactly what we want, to meet the demand and where we are. McMendel absorbs about a one hundred new, i- if you look, uh, in the rearview mirror, about a hundred brand-new lots per year. And when we looked at the marketplace, we sat here and said, all right, if it absorbs a hundred lots per year, there was like ninety that were there and very few that were even proposed. Well, most of those ninety have been burned through by the time we're here, and there's very few that's coming online. So in order to keep the permit fees and the building and the city open, you need to have the revenues from ongoing building permits and inspections and on, ongoing. So we need to, from our perspective, move forward, because interest rate clock, you know, is like Pac-Man and eats every day. But we also think to meet the needs of the community and the city, we need to have a buildable land inventory that exists. So we want to move on. So what I'm saying here is instead of at preliminary plat approval, or instead of waiting all the way until we get to, uh, final plat recording to have that six month, why don't we start it from, say, site de- the commencement of site development? So when the bulldozers are rolling...
So which is about four months?
Which is about four months from now. Six months starts.
When you first shovel dirt.
Yeah, so, so I think that would be a happy medium if we're looking for, where does a six-month start?
I don't think that's a happy medium at all.
Okay.
Because you guys are spec builders, you know, we're talking about other builders who want to come in and purchase lots.
Right.
And what you've recommended is, does not work. I can tell you that right now, uh, you're limiting the amount of window time for them to come in and actually purchase lots. Some of them want to purchase for cash. They can close in ten days. So it's, it's something that, uh, if you're really earnest in opening up these lots for versatility of house plans, for helping the community, uh, for being a part of the community and partnering up and a win-win and all this, then I think you should do the six months from the recording of the plat. And I don't think it'd hurt you a bit.
Well...
That's just my opinion, hey?
Okay.
Take what it's worth, uh, that's, it's, it's a sticking point for me when I read that.
Okay, well, we can go with that. I mean, we have the twenty-five percent limitation on that, so we've just got to hold fifty-seven lots off until we record the plat before we list them.
I think, I think it's a great project.
Okay.
Okay? I've got a couple major concerns, that being one of them.
Okay, well, then we'll go with when we record the plat.
Yeah, I, um, if that's what the council decides. I do want to a- add some information so that it's fully clear and perhaps staff could illuminate on the, uh, this issue. One of the things, we talk about the policy of the, um, uh, comprehensive plan that suggests this. I think on our meetings with the staff, that policy, if you read it, it says, it's a directive to staff to create a, a, a standard. And they told us they hadn't created one yet, so I'm not sure, um...
No, we worked it out.
We, we...
No, it's, it's fine.
What was proposed is what we worked out with staff as a, as a suggestion.
Okay, twenty-five percent, we'll wait until recording, we'll make sure we hold back at least that many lots.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay?
Go on. Yeah, so the, um, the pattern we're talking about, a transition, looking at, uh, the east-to-west, uh, density. In the east, there's the existing lots of, uh, original Shattenclaim subdivision and Michael Book Meadows. So that's where we have our larger lots. And to the west of that, you have the medium-sized lots existing of Shattenclaim and Cottonwood. And so that's the reason why we placed our medium-sized lots of, in that area of Baker Creek East. And further to the west, we have, um, multiple duplex townhome lots, so the existing, uh, Shattenclaim phases, as well as the Cottonwood, uh, townhomes. And that's why we placed our smaller lots in the Baker Creek West area, adjacent to the multifamily and many of the higher intensity uses, uh, the school and park and future commercial sites. And the seventh and final, uh, objective of our plan development is to protect natural features and incorporating them into the design. And this is where I'd like to talk a little bit about the, the wetland question. So the, uh, the wetlands on the map, uh, you can see there's a, a hatching over some of the green areas along the drainage, as well as on those lots in the center. We, we did, uh, during our due diligence, uh, wetland delineation already, and we submitted that to the Department of State Lands for concurrence. And that's already occurred, so these wetlands, um, on these drawings that we've submitted in our exhibits, represent the delineated and existing wetlands. So I think it was, is, uh, condition twenty-seven that the staff referenced. They didn't know it was already done because it wasn't a submittal requirement, so we, it's not in the record. But we can meet that condition of approval. And so the building envelopes and, uh, typical footprints of, of buildings shown on these graphics around, uh, the, on the lots around the wetland areas, you know, there's a buildable footprint on these lots where wetlands exist. And we're proposing to place those, um, uh, natural features in, uh, tracks and conservation easements to protect them. The other thing is about the cul-de-sacs and modi- modified lots is when we were looking at the layouts of the project, you have all these stub streets, and we said, oh, it's easy, just extend them. And obviously, in some of our preliminary concept plans, before we got the wetland delineation completed and really got into the, the full due diligence of understanding the property, you know, we, we extended Snowberry East, you know, all the way to Shatten Drive, and we extended, I think it's Mahala, I can't pronounce it right, south, all the way to Street A. And, um, then when we found out that there's wetlands here, uh, we modified the plan to protect the natural features. So that this plan represents zero impact to any wetlands, all of the wetlands are protected. And so, um, obviously... Hope that answered your question.
Currently, but, uh, at times in your supportive documents, it said, uh, wetlands and/or, uh, drainage.
Right.
Uh, so are you treating those as one and the same?
So the drainage will also be protected, on the right-hand side, it says open space tracks, arrow in the bottom right corner. The, uh, that's where the drainage pond is designed, it says actually detention pond B. It'll be in track B, next to the active open space. So the... So the, our civil engineers here tonight actually designed, and I think that was the same question with Counselor Jeffries, is that twenty thousand square feet in Baker Creek West and this detention pond B, as well as detention pond C at the terminus of Snowberry. Those tracks have already been sized for the amount of volume of stormwater generated by the rooftops and streets. So yeah, those areas will be protected just like the wetlands in tracks.
Why will they be protected in the same way, the question, based on the fact that if they're collectors for drain water, that water will have chemicals and other things from homes and, and yards and driveways and, and oil? So whereas the protected wetland area is just that.
Well, I mean, it's protected in a tract owned by the homeowners association so that it will be maintained in perpetuity, protected for that purpose. So the passive open spaces that we referenced when we talked about open space amenities under our goal three, those same open space tracks that are passive open spaces will remain protected in perpetuity by the homeowners association, be maintained.
So what, in, you realize there were wetlands on the property, and you brought in a consultant, they identified a, a protected area. What, what portion of the wetlands started out, hundred percent wetlands, not for the whole property, but however much wetland, wetlands there existed, let's say that was at a hundred percent, about what percentage of those wetlands are being maintained?
One hundred percent. Zero wetlands will be impacted. So the boundaries of the conservation easement on those lots is the boundaries of the wetlands. And then the drainage, you know, there's some areas of that drainage that aren't wetland. Think, you can see, if you can see the hatching of the scale, you have the drawings and the material, not all of that, that open space is wetland. So a hundred percent of the wetland will be protected, yeah.
So the drainage is, even though it says and/or drainage in the document, really the, the drainage is completely separate, a completely different entity?
If, if you look at the, the terminus of Snowberry, Street or the cul-de-sac, that first bit of open space is not wetland. That, it's the storm pond, that's just upland that's going to be excavated to become a depression for the stormwater to go in and be treated before it goes into the wetland and the drainage.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yes.
Yeah, and I think they're just about to the point where, yeah, our intent is, because I think we.
I think this is our last slide.
I think we lose continuity if we don't.
Just wanted to wrap up. We'll skip the discussion of, of these other criteria. We're just going to gloss over them in any event. As, as you can see, this is a complex proposal, and there's a lot of moving parts to it, and there's a lot of competing goals and policies, and we're trying to find that balance. You know, as we pointed out, when you add open space, you, you lose affordable housing. So we're trying to balance everything. And personally, I think that this plan represents a mighty fine balance to integrate this new development into an existing community. We've got development all around us already. We're trying to be consistent with it. We're trying to drive that density over to the northwest where it's going to be right next to the commercial center across the way. And so I, I think this is really the best plan that anyone could come up with for this development. As the staff report concluded that we satisfied all the criteria, and we agree with that. We did listen to the planning commission. When they denied us, they said, give us more open space, give us more connectivity. We did that. We also want to point out, though, as staff noted earlier tonight, the planning commission relied on a purpose statement as its basis for denial, and Luba has always said consistently that purpose statements are not to be used for that purpose. So we think it, you know, aside from the fact that I think that was legal error, we did go back and improve the plan, and we think we've got something here that is approvable The last thing I want to say before we close up is I put on your desk tonight a, this is an article from February twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, of the News Register in McMinnville. This is an editorial from the local newspaper, and the section that I highlighted, it says, "Open space is nice, but it comes at a price." Ironically, the city was poised to break ground on a new adjacent park, but the unexpected planning commission rebuffed, flying in the face of the approved staff recommendation may force a year's delay. Of course, that's because we're going to put the road in to make that park be a go. And then it says, continuing, it says, "Smaller lots and higher densities represent the only realistic means of making single-family housing more affordable. The cost of labor and materials is fixed, but builders can cut land costs by reducing lot sizes, thus offering homes at a lower price point." I didn't write that, but I wish I had because it's, it's exactly on point. It's what we're trying to communicate here tonight. With that, I, I would, obviously, any questions that you have, we'd like to entertain them. We'd like to ask for an I-vote tonight on this proposed ordinance, fifty, twenty-one. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank, thank you for your thoughtful going through the presentation and sticking on point and helping us understand what we need to do.
You may have more questions.
Yeah. So any counselors have any additional questions?
Yeah, I mentioned earlier on, at the beginning of the law, that I had an expectation of the, during this interaction with Michael Booker, the Jason Crawford there. If you talk a little bit about those properties and how you're planning for those and how you're, I would hope about that because I, I assume it was going to be a, given the location. And, I mean, what if Michael Booker put up a, 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 a question?
Short answer's no. And we've seen what they've done elsewhere, just to the south of us. And I guess we made the leaping assumption that as long as we were good neighbors, they would be too. But it's something that we'll follow through on.
I want to say that Victoria, which is that most easterly north-south street in the drawing there, which we're going to extend south from the original Shatten Claim subdivision, that's a stub street, and the existing depth to the east from the right-of-way is a hundred and thirty feet. So those lots are, are, are just the same depth as the other lots. And so the interface with the, the golf course will be, you know, backyards backing up to a, a golf course. And if you walk that property line, the, there is a hedge, there is a ton of landscaping on the golf course side of the property line, obviously, because it's the edge, there's blackberries intertwined between their hedges from our side. I'm not sure from their side. So I don't think they're going to change and, and take away hedge.
Well, conversely, if you go south, there's not that obstruction. So, yeah.
My understanding is that.
Okay.
Operation of the golf course that there was.
Okay.
Just.
Sure.
Figure that out.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
It's a good suggestion. I thank you.
Other questions from counselors at this point?
Well, since you introduced this document here, I just, the, I have to say, you know, that what's very appealing about your application is the potential of more affordable housing. We're all aware that that's a great need for our city. The document you introduced, the News Register article that reads, "Smaller lots and higher densities represent the only realistic means of making single-family housing more affordable." While, while that perhaps is true, smaller lots and higher densities does, also does not mean that that housing will be more affordable. We see home prices are on a, a sharp rise right now. I tried to look up and kind of confirm some of the numbers that you had in your staff report about our median family income and what that means in terms of affordable housing, along with the, you know, the promise of being able to get a house on the market for two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So my, my concern here is that we do this with the good intention of creating more affordable housing, but that the end result isn't actually more affordable housing for the, for the city based on our median family income, using the thirty percent number that you're using from HUD. And then, of course, there's nothing, there's no promise in this exchange that you will keep a certain percentage of the housing at that affordable housing rate. And of course, I mean, I appreciate that you also want to make money in this process. But, you know, the, the, one of the main things that this, that your application touches on over and over again, and pages and pages of, is supporting our need for affordable housing. And so I would really like to see in some way, and I don't think we're currently in a situation where we can put it in a, a condition for approval, but perhaps there's some way that we could guarantee that this, you know, you're looking at your SFD thirty-two's, that's almost twenty-seven percent of the total lots. That would be great if we could guarantee that those, that that twenty-seven percent of those lots actually would hit where we need them to hit for affordable housing for our city. Some thoughts?
And on, on top of that, just a thought that I'd had, is I, I know we have put a lot of effort into affordable housing. Something that Jeff and I have done, we've been going up to major employers in our community, and there's something that's called workforce housing, which is above affordable housing. And we are losing tremendous workforce because they can't afford to be here. And so we're talking out at the hospital, it's not the doctors, but it's the nurses that can't, if, the nurses and families that can't afford to be here, and they're looking for this mid, you know, a bit above what we call affordable housing. I think this hits, the smattering of what you've done here really is going to address that. We've got a long way to go on affordable housing. We just started that whole process. But when, when I, when I tell you, we go and talk to CEOs and presidents of companies that says, our big concern is our people can't live in McMinnville, and they're making a good wage. This fits that in my mind, so it's a start.
And I'd just like to make one more comment on this. You, you're also going to have the trickle-down effect, and that is that many people who presently live in part of your rental stock are going to be able to take advantage of becoming a homeowner in this type of product, and that's going to free up additional rental units that then go to helping meet that affordable need for housing in general.
I just wanted to bring that up from the fact that that's currently what we're hearing is we're going out, Jeff and I, as the new city manager and as a new mayor, we're making inroads and talking to our corporate partners out there. Okay, any other questions for the applicants? Adam?
Just going off what Remy commented on affordable housing and what you commented on mid-level, I think the word that keeps getting pounded through with the Baker Creek West is affordability. And looking at the numbers, I just don't see it as affordability. I see it as market competitive. But affordability is definitely a sales pitch and a stretch, in my opinion. Forty-seven K a year breaks down to about eleven seventy-five a month somebody could spend on a house. Two hundred and fifty K, thirty years at four percent, without PMI, without property taxes, without any other operating costs of power, gas, or anything like that, is eleven ninety-three a month.
Keep in mind that with that six units per acre density limit, it's going to be hard to get anything lower than what we've got right now. And, and we're not, we're not saying that we're going to hit the median of, you know, forty-seven hundred, but we're going to get pretty close. We're going to get a lot closer than you are under the current real estate market where the average median price right now is four hundred thousand last month. We're going to be bringing that down significantly. And, you know, obviously, we can't solve the entire problem, but we can put a big chop into the, into the problem, and I think that's what we're here to do.
Well, Mayor Hill.
That's exactly right. This is workforce housing.
Yeah, exactly. I was going to say, Mayor Hill introduced the concept of workforce housing. That's what I referred this to in our office, is workforce housing. And there's two ways to really address it, which aren't part of this application, and that's expansion of the urban growth boundary and higher density zoning and being able to, you know, accommodate that within your community.
I also want to remind everybody that there's, you know, proposed apartment buildings here, so we're also bringing in, you know, a variety of, of housing needs. There'll be people like the nurse who's currently renting a home somewhere else in McMinnville who might move in to a, a lot here, and that home that was being rented is to be available. That's the domino effect that Gordon was talking about.
Any other questions?
Not just now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. So where I'm at right now, do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Please relate your testimony to the listed criteria. Mark?
Do we limit to five minutes? Given the late hours.
I assume I don't have to sign in.
As we, as we start this process, those that testify from the audience, we're going to limit your comments to five minutes, given the lateness of the hour. So. Most questions.
You can do it, Mark.
Mark Davis. I'm a slave to my garden at six fifty-two Southeast Washington Street. I think it's McMinnville, but it could be Redmond at this hour. Fortunately, I wrote some things down here, so I'll try to run through those and keep it to five minutes. I'm not a fan of the plan development process for a lot of the reasons you saw tonight. I mean, I really think the city needs to bite the bullet, get some more land in here, and zone it for what it's going to be so we don't drag our, our friends and neighbors into these meetings that drag on half the night and, and honestly, don't get us much of anywhere. I mean, I'm, I'm being honest here. I would just let the last planning commission, and we went through the same, same kind of, you know, neighbors in here really upset over a rezoning. I mean, we need more land for affordable housing. We've been out of our foreland in this community for the last twenty years. And, I mean, this, I'm supporting this because this is the only way we can get any kind of multifamily development in this community unless you want to go out and buy expensive commercial land and, and pay that price to develop it. It's wrong. Okay? But I'm going to, I'm going to stick, I'm, I've got some comp plan stuff here. I'm going to shout my numbers out. The comp plan does call in several places for spreading affordable housing around the community, and, and I'll refer you to the comp plan policies, sixty-one, sixty-seven, sixty-seven, eighty-four, and eighty-six. So, I mean, and I'm going to reference you to the economic opportunities analysis, the EOA, which was completed in November of two thousand and thirteen, adopted by this council. Figure eight on page fifteen, the covered employment in two thousand and ten. They, they listed in this community thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three jobs. Okay? There, of those jobs, two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three were in the retail and dining sector with an average annual income of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and two dollars. There were another forty-three hundred and twenty jobs in the services sector with an average income of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. That was fifty-six percent of the jobs in our community. And I'm asking you up there, I mean, Adam was, was giving some numbers out. I know the mayor used to be a banker. There's a CPA sitting there. There's a developer sitting over there. I mean, people at these income levels, how are they going to afford housing in our community? I mean, we got a problem here. You know, since, since the time of that, I mean, wages have, have increased, but as, as the developers testified, you know, home prices have increased too. I mean, how realistic is it that people at these income levels are going to be approved for mortgages? I mean, we need more affordable housing. We need places where people can rent. I mean, I started out as a renter. I think, you know, we, we even heard from the developers that that's not uncommon. I mean, you need a chance to be able to have an affordable rental so you can save up some money for a down payment, hopefully get a little better job that pays some more. I mean, these are just average wages, so, you know, over time, generally, you make a little more money, and then you get a down payment and you start, you know, buying a house. I mean, we need to figure out how people can start at the bottom and work their way up. And I really, I mean, I heard trickle-down economics, and I just hate that. I mean, you know, there's some reality to that, but, I mean, that's not any way to solve the problem. Yeah, some more numbers. I mean, I, I guess the main point I want to make is that, you know, if we expect, you know, citizens in our community to be, you know, serving our meals, pumping our gas, clerking at stores, then I think we ought to allow them to live in our neighborhoods. I mean, I really think that's the bottom line here, and, and that's why I'm supporting this proposal. why I'm supporting this proposal. Thank you.
Any questions of Mark? Again, you know that we're, we're starting to address something that we've overlooked for quite a while, and we're trying to catch up on this. And it's going to take a lot of work on our part, but thank you for your thoughtful comments. Okay, do we have any other individuals that would like to speak in support? If you did identify yourself, then...
Yeah, my name's David Hahn. I live at 20, 2415 Northeast Cowls Court here in McMinnville. Excuse me. Just, I'll keep it really short. Couple of items, I just want to make sure that doesn't get pushed by the wayside. And it's that quasi-judicial statement that we've heard, and that that's what this decision is. I think when this came up before the planning commission, we got what people felt. But there are rules within our community that have been set forth, and I really encourage all of you to vote according to those rules. Secondly, then, you have a paid planning staff that spent who knows how many hours, that have done a great job putting all this together, helping or working, I don't know, with Baker Creek Development. We've been here for hours. If you're tired and you don't, man, just what, go back, rely on what the professionals say. They say that this needs to pass. And then I'll jump real quick to affordable housing. That's been beaten really hard tonight. But I got one statistic. The RMLS in McMinnville lists zero building sites under $100,000. We don't need just Baker Creek Development, we need two of them. This community needs, I mean, the whole county. So, yeah, let's open it up. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much for your comments. Any other testimony in favor of our applicant this evening? Okay. Now, we are going to ask for those in opposition of this proposal and relate your testimony to the listed criteria. And we'll just call, is Roger a good one here?
Yes.
Go ahead, come up, Roger.
Thank you very much to the staff for an excellent presentation. And I appreciate this council questioning a lot of the things that I have questions about. I'm going to try to keep this short. General provision 1703, mutually beneficial relationship to each other. Sort of drops the ball a little bit with the existing Shattenclaim. I live in Shattenclaim 2347 Northwest Fendal. And in order for them to meet this density levels, they're actually using Shattenclaim, which is not really part of this development at all, but they're using that, which has a lower density. And they're combining their high density in order to get to that less than six threshold. I think that's sort of important to realize. Also, some of the lot sizes that on, on the maps that have been shown on the thing here are inaccurate in existing Shattenclaim. The southwest corner of Fendal Way and Glenfell Loop is showing as two lots, where there's actually only one lot. So, there's just a lot of unknowns and a lot of things that are sort of flowing, and no one really knows the answers. And there's variances asking for all over the place. And we're repealing an ordinance in order to replace this. And who's to say that that's not going to change? It's a little worrisome that this is being able to be so thrown around and not real specific on a lot of the issues that we have questions Variance is requested when adherence to specific standards in the zoning ordinance would cause a particular hardship. I see no hardships happening tonight. They need to illustrate and address land uses, circulation. I think the traffic flow is going to be a real problem, especially to that high-density Lot 126. There's absolutely no way to get in or out of there. There's no easy access to Hill or Baker Creek. You have to go through the neighborhood to get in or out of there. Parking, yeah, you might be able to get four cars on your piece of property, but you certainly will only be able to get one of them out at a time. There's very little, I think the on-street parking was like one for every two lots. It's not going to be enough. Let's see. 17.53.010, purpose, to avoid undue congestion of population. Let's see, 17.72.130. Before a variance may be granted, the commission must first determine that the following circumstances substantially exist, that there are special conditions affecting the property that are not common to all property in the area, that the variance is necessary. Extraordinary hardship would result from strict compliance with the regulations that are set forth. They're just asking for a variance on every single thing. I don't think that's appropriate. Variance complies with the spirit and intent of the regulations will not be detrimental to the welfare or injurious to other property in the vicinity, which is assuredly will lower the property values in the existing Shattenclaim. The variance requested should be the minimum variance which would alleviate And we went over the dates. They're, I'm not sure that they're actually within the time limits, but they're pushing it if, at best. Adequate provision should be made for traffic circulation. Skip around a little. Increase in density, reduction in the amount of open space. A lot of the open spaces that they're claiming as open spaces, you know, not usable. It's basin, wetland. The, one of the biggest open spaces is actually an easement for the power lines. So, you know, that's sort of a freebie. It's not really that usable. Plan can be completed within a reasonable period of time. Streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic. Will not overload the streets. I believe that's going to be overloading the streets. The development do not have an adverse effect upon surrounding areas, public utilities. Strict application of this title would cause an undue, unnecessary hardship. Planning commission may attach conditions which are found necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding property or neighborhood, which I would hope would include additional avenues to get to Hill or Baker Creek. I just think that with only the one outlet, especially if that apartment building goes up, it's going to be a problem. I mean, we're talking, you know, possible 900, 1,000 cars, just in this, just in the proposed development. Additional. Special physical conditions or objectives exist to, okay, what special physical conditions or objectives exist to warrant a departure from the standard regulation requirements? I don't have the answer for that. Streets are adequate to support anticipated traffic. We already went over that. I recommend the application be denied. Planning commission shall ensure that no planned development overlay granted under Section A or B of 17.51.010, which is merely a guise to circumvent the intent of the zoning ordinance. I believe that this is somewhat trying to circumvent what's the zoning ordinance we already have. There is a zoning ordinance. Hold fast to that. It's already there. Density shall be determined by underlying zone designations. Relation of the proposed development to the surrounding area in the comprehensive plan, which hasn't been talked about too much. Okay, repealed. Like I said, it doesn't necessarily rezon, well, it's rezoning R1, zoned areas to RPD1, which is an already developed R1, and they're using that to, again, make the density appear as if it's slower than it would be. If you, just to adjust their development, the density would be over 6.0. There's just too many unknowns. I think there's going to be way too many vehicles in there. Too many cars will hide the housing, so we don't need to worry about the fence, which was one of your first comments that we had. You know, with the five and the three, at least you'll get eight feet between houses, between buildings. But at that point, you could wind up still being closer to your neighbor than you are your own refrigerator. It's a problem. Staff said that this was going to be built out in five years. I don't see that as actual, I mean, Shattenclaimed is just getting finished being built out now. We brought up the garbage, compost, recycling, glass. When it comes to the day of pickup service, recycle service, you have your recycling and your compost, you got to have three feet in between each of those. I'm not sure you could actually put them all out for all the houses.
One more minute?
So, some of the developers' comments were, they said they want a place where people can come and stay. Well, I believe it's going to be mostly rentals. Diversity, I think this misses the mark. They say that they evolve fast in their plans. They're just requesting more variances. Efficient homes with water heaters, knee glass and all that, is that going to be a condition of approval? They're only planning on building on 20% of the lots and trying to sell 80%. We really have an unknown as to how this is going to look in the end, if they're only planning on holding on to 20% of the lots. Trying to find a balance, I'd love to find a balance. I'm all for development, but I think that the apartment building in that corner, in that lot on 126, with no access to it, along with all the smaller lots, it's just going to be too congested for that neighborhood. It's a great plan. I just don't think that the apartment building belongs within that. I'm probably out of time. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the council bringing up and really delving into some of the questions that I was hoping were going to get thought about. Again, I request that you deny this appeal. Thank you.
You, Roger?
Jeff Hayes?